Right, it's 6:00 PM and I'll call the June 7th, 2022 meeting of West Richardson City Council Board at 6:00 PM for our first in-person virtual hybrid meeting. Y'all gotta figure out how to do this all over again. And with that, before we call the roll, I'll ask Stephanie to kind of get us up to speed of what the hybrid meeting ground rules are, and then call the roll if you would, Stephanie.
Great, thank you. Tonight's meeting will be in-person with a virtual meeting component. If you are participating virtually, please make sure the name shown at the bottom of your video view is the name you would like the mayor to use. You can change this by right-clicking on the three dots in the upper corner of your video view and clicking Rename. Audience members present in the council chambers will be called upon first during public comment periods. Please limit your comments to three minutes. When the mayor asks for public comments, please virtually raise your hand if you wish to speak. To virtually raise your hand, click on Participants and then click on Raise Hand. If you are participating by phone only, press asterisk nine to raise your hand. Also, please bear with us, this is our first hybrid meeting. All right, Brent Gary?
Here.
Richard Bloom?
Here.
Fred Brink?
Here.
David Fettow?
Here.
May Hayes?
Here.
Kate Moran?
Present.
John Smart?
Here.
Ken Stoker?
Here.
Hey, and with that, I'm gonna start at the end with Councilman Stoker to lead the pledge of allegiance. As we work through the weeks to come, we'll go on down the line, and the flag is behind you this time. The United States of America, the Republic of Washington. Thank you, Council. Council, the updated agenda was sent to you by Stephanie earlier, and I'd like to have a motion to approve this agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve the agenda presented.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close like sign. Thank you, Council. Boy, that sounds good. Everybody all at once again here in person, so this is, this is great. And with that presentation this evening, we have our Finance Director, Aaron Glenn, is gonna provide the 2022 First Quarter Financial Report. Aaron, if you would please, Council, your screens in front of you and the audience.
Can you hear me? Thank you, Mayor Gary. Good evening, Council. This evening, I'm presenting the 2022 First Quarter Financial Report. We will start, if we can get the clicker to work. Okay, we'll start with an overview and an economic update, followed by specific information regarding the general fund, and then the other funds. Sorry, we're clicking. Okay, this first overview of the economy item is a chart I started sharing about a year ago. On the left side is specific information to Benton County, with the right side being all of Washington. The majority of the displayed economic indicators are trending in a positive direction compared to the same time a year ago. Employment numbers are recovering quite nicely. An area of caution may be the consumer behavior, the very bottom lines there. Credit card spending continues to increase. This could be positive if the spending is due to increase consumer confidence, but this could also be a cautionary sign if consumers are using their credit cards to make ends meet. Let's go to the next slide. This brings us to our next slide. Inflation is higher than it has been in years and is continuing. This slide is graphical information from February of 2022, and we continue to see the numbers rise. Consumers are having to pay more for their everyday purchases and could be pushing the credit card spending that we saw on the previous slide. We've discussed inflation for the past couple of quarters, and this is gonna continue as a topic in the foreseeable future. CPI in Seattle area increased 8.1% at the end of February compared to February of 2021. This is up 0.5% from December when I gave the 2021 fourth quarter report. Food prices have increased almost 10% and energy is almost 22%. Locally, we look at the city's building activity. Single-family permits issued were 42 for the first quarter of '22 compared to 112 the same time period in '21. When we look at the data compared to the 2021 budgeted numbers, at the end of March 2022, the city was at the August of '22 projection. So even with a slower quarter this year compared to last year, we're still doing really well. Here's another view. Here's another view of the single-family permits. This one shows the years in comparison along with the green line showing the increase in valuation. So the red line from 2021 is where we were the first quarter of last year with the red line for '22. Here's another view of the building permit fees collected compared to what was budgeted. The light blue area is the budgeted revenue compared to the gray black line is the amount we've collected as of March 31st. You can see the slope of the line there in November changed, November, December 2021, when we did the mid-bino budget. We're a little bit under our projection at this time, so it's gonna be something we're gonna watch. Now, looking at specific information regarding the general fund, this slide shows where the money is coming from in terms of budget, and you can see the three major sources are sales tax, property tax, and utility tax. Here's a view of the general fund revenue collected. The city's collected 9% less in revenue in '21 compared to 2020. The graph. So, sales tax did increase though by 7%, which we will see on this. Here's another view of the revenues. This is comparing the budget for what was collected for year 2021. General fund collected 63%. We're right on target. By this time, we're looking for at least 62.5%. So it's right on target of what we should be collecting. These next three slides, look at sales tax in the general fund. Sales tax increased. So, sales tax revenue increased 7% compared to the prior year. And this next slide, this is another view, which is comparing the different business sectors. Retail increased 11%, bringing the total portion to 41% of sales tax collected. In reviewing some of the specific data, some of these retailers are associated with the building industry, such as lumber suppliers, cabinet companies, et cetera. Also, online retailers have been a big contributor. Next slide. This third sales tax slide is referencing sales tax compared to where we are in the budget. So again, the same thing, you see the increase in November, December, from when we did the mid-bino budget adjustment. We're currently partway into April, if you take that little red line straight down. So we're ahead of projection still. That's a good indicator. Excellent. Another major revenue source in the general fund is the utility taxes. Overall, utility tax revenue increased 7% compared to 2021. There was an increase in the electric, water, sewer, and stormwater and solid waste. Most of this increase is attributed to the new development going on. This is just another look at the sales tax that we talked about before. In years past, the utility tax, sorry, not sales tax, the utility tax, the telephone utility taxes been on a downward. This is the first time comparing quarter over quarter that we saw an increase, which probably shouldn't expect us to continue. I think it's an anomaly. We'll look at it next quarter, though. Another major general fund revenue source is property tax, which increased 1% compared to the prior year. The majority of these taxes are collected in the second quarter and fourth quarter, as you can see by the chart here. So, this is where your money goes. So this is gonna be in regards to your expenditures. 51% goes to public safety. Community Development makes up 15% with Public Works making up 12%, which includes the parks, engineering services, and I think hydrant meters. And then you have little tiny percentages for the remaining. So, where does, another one where your money goes, the general fund expenditures were at 50%. Not much, not much to talk about here. It's pretty flat, nothing that stands out. Oh, special revenue, the state's special revenue for street park impact criminal justice. This graph displays the major revenue sources for each fund. Each of these funds has seen major revenue source increase, with the exception of the park impact, which saw a decrease. The decrease is most likely attributed to the Heights at Red Mountain Development. They are not paying park impact fees, but instead building a large park. This is a picture of a special revenue expenditures. Again, not a lot of activity going here. It's remained fairly flat, with the exception of the street fund, which was purchase of some equipment. So now we'll look at our capital projects funds, the first quarter for, was for our first time for Fund 321 for our curb cooperative way project. The others are REIT 1, REIT 2, and our Fund 355 for the transportation. So, for, okay, so for revenues, there wasn't a lot of activity, especially for the police and the cooperative way. The police facility is just ending. Not a lot of revenue being received, and our cooperative way project is also just beginning. So not a lot of activity. Revenues for funds 301 and 302, excellent. So, 301 and 302 is our real estate excise tax, which saw an 18% increase in collection compared to the first quarter last year. So, and this is our transportation impact fee revenues, which we saw a decrease 67%. Most of this can be contributed to the construction of the police facility began last year, and we had a big one-month sum left it all at once the first quarter. We're still on target for budget. Expenditures for the capital funds were minimal the first quarter. Not a lot to report on there. The next few slides, we're gonna take a closer look at our utilities. For water, for the water revenue, water collections increased 2%, partly due to rate increase as well as the increase in number of accounts. Compared to March of 2021, there was 208 new utility water accounts. Next slide is sewer collections increased by 9%, mostly the same reasons as the water. The irrigation increased 4%. Again, most of it, the rate change and increase in residential homes, although irrigation isn't too much. Stormwater, same, up 8%. And then the last utility revenue, solid waste, was up 7%. This final slide is a view of the fund expenditures. Again, for the most part, these have remained flat, with the exception of Fund 441, which is the water system development. You can see that's a little bit higher than last year, but that again is attributed to capital projects going on. And that concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Aaron, if anybody has any questions, Baron, if she's part of the tribe. Aaron, thank you very much. Well, appreciate your report. Council, with that, we'll go ahead and move on to the consent agenda, which will then it's the regular meeting on May 17th, and it's on May 10th, special meeting on May 23rd, 2022. Ordinance 1022, amending West Richardson Municipal Code, Chapter 10.08, speed limits portion of Collins Road and Keane Road. Motion to award Cooperative Way Project, motion to authorize Public Works Director to execute a $50,000 stormwater grant with Department of Ecology. If there's anyone from the audience who'd like to speak for our consent agenda this evening, please come to the podium, state your name and residence for the record. Seeing none, I'll ask anybody attending by way of our virtual option this evening, raise your virtual hand or star nine, step your recognition. Stephanie, I don't have the screen like we had for the last two and a half years, so I'm relying on your ability to find that raised hand or star nine.
I do not see anyone, no.
With that, Council, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda this evening?
To approve the consent agenda.
Motion a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close like sign, motion carried unanimously. Thank you, Council. This brings us to our first opportunity for citizen comments for items that are not listed on the agenda this evening. And if you would like to provide comments to the council, please come to the podium and state your name and residence for the record. See, nobody jumping up, headed up front here. So with that, I'll ask if there is a virtual attendee that would like to speak this evening. Stephanie, you see anybody this evening that would like to speak with us?
I do not see anyone, no.
Very much. With that, we will go ahead and move on to resolutions, motions, and public hearings. Eight A and B are a public hearing and a resolution for the adoption of the 2023-2028 Transportation Improvement Plan. Public Works Director, Mr. Slade, will report this evening. Roscoe?
Thank you, Mayor. So what you have before you, Council, is what we do on an annual basis here. We go and update our six-year transportation improvement program to be consistent with the transportation element of the comprehensive plan. The program outlines funded and planned projects that are throughout the city. The projects listed on the program are eligible for state funds, federal funds, and the city's transportation impact fees. Cities are required to adopt the program on an annual basis before July 1st. The public has a couple opportunities to make comments on the plan before it's submitted to the state. This is just the first one. There'll be a regional open house. I think it's August 26th, a date or a place to be determined. What you got in your packet is the staff report outlines the current one, proposed one for 2328, and also includes a map of last year's. And I'll kind of just go through a summary of what the changes are between the two, so you can, it's easier to compare that way. So the projects that were removed from the tip, which was the 2227, was number 10, the North 68 Second Avenue Pavement Preservation Project. This was a project that was awarded a TIV grant in 2022, and will be constructed in 2023. So that's getting removed since it's funded. Projects number 19 and 20 were Santa Anita Boulevard, Red Mountain Way. This is roads that were east-west, north-south around the TLAC property, the Richmond School District property, and those aren't, will be development-determined locations. So we took them off the tip. Projects that were added to the tip, the current one, the 2328 that's before you, is an SR224 pathway. If you recall, the Red Mountain Transportation Improvement Project has a pathway that goes from Keane Road out to Antonori in that planned project, but didn't extend that pathway the other direction. And staff felt that that pathway was important to continue it and carry it to North 62nd Avenue, connecting the Brotherhood neighborhood to that regional pathway system that would actually connect them all back into the other cities. So that project was added as number three. Number 19 was Rupert Road widening, excuse me, it's number 19. And then projects that were modified, there's a couple. So number 10, Collins Road, previously it was just a pavement preservation project, but after our recent engineering analysis, that's a reconstruct with some traffic comments, that's its own project, number 10. And number 17 is Paradise Way Extension. That project previously stopped at the old railroad right-of-way corridor, and now that extends out to Rupert Road, was the changes. So those are the changes between last year's and what's proposed for this year. Council's required to hold a public hearing before taking action on adopting this by resolution.
Thank you, Roscoe. With that, I'll open the public hearing up at 6:22. Anyone would like to provide comments this evening? Please come to the podium, state your name and place your residence for the record. See no one, Stephanie? Do you see anyone virtually?
I do not.
I'll close the public hearing at 6:23. Do I have a motion for 3222 adopting six-year 2023-2028 tip?
I'll move to pass Resolution 32-22, adopting the city's 2023-2028 six-year transportation improvement program.
Second, Council, any questions to Roscoe? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close like sign, motion carried. Thank you, Council. Moving on to items H, C, and D is public hearing and resolution for the vacation of the utility easement. Our associate planner, Alicia Ranson, will present our staff reports this evening. Alicia, come join us if you would, please.
Good evening. We have an easement vacation that's being applied for by Jennifer and Chance Overholt, as well as Nancy and Fred Perrin. They are adjoining adjacent property owners that they've applied together. They submitted all their application requirements as well as the applicable fee. The site is 936 and 980 South 54th Avenue, that's short plat, 3297 lots 1 and 2. You'll notice that it's part of the same short plat. It was originally all the same lot of Willamette Heights Section 6. If you'll look in your packet in Attachment 3, there is a vicinity map for your reference. The, they're looking to vacate the 20 feet of that 30 feet of easement that was recorded on the face of the Willamette Heights Section 6 plat, which is different from the offers of dedication. The, so they are requesting to vacate the, if you'll look in Attachment 2, the east, the 20 feet along the east property lines and the 20 feet around the south property lines. The staff routed the completed application to Franchise Utilities, and they had 15 days to review. We received no objections to the proposal from Franchise Utilities. And the Public Works Department, they approved the vacation request. We did receive one comment from a Chris Wright. That was a question for staff about the easement vacation that came in after the staff report was produced, but it, it was a question rather than a specific comment. The staff feels that the vacation of the easement will not unduly jeopardize health, safety, or welfare or public good, and their attention of the easement no longer serves any useful public purpose. And I recommend that the easement be vacated.
Thank you. With that, I will open the public hearing up at 6:26. And if you would like to address Council in regards to this item on the agenda, please come to the podium and state your name, residency for the record. See no one here in person. And anybody virtually like to comment this evening, please raise your virtual hand or star nine. They will recommend. Stephanie, do you see anyone virtually this evening?
I do not.
Good, thank you. That'll close the public hearing at 6:27. If I could, Resolution 3322, easement vacation, 004-2022, motion, Council.
I move to pass Resolution 3322, authorizing the vacation portion of 30 foot utility easement, file VACA 042.
Motion a second, Council, any questions of staff? The Councilmember Brink, if you would, Alicia, yes, come back.
Just a quick question, Ms. Ranson. You mentioned that Mr. Christopher Wright asked a question. What that question means can show the details.
He had to.
You could ask Eric to go ahead and follow up. He was an individual that had the correspondence back and forth. So, Mr. Menahol, if you would, please.
Yes, you bet. So he requested and asked what authority the city had to vacate the public easement. So I went ahead and consulted with Bronson and Ken Harper and provided him with how we have the legal authority.
Thank you, Mr. Menahol.
Any other questions, Council? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close like sign, motion carried. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Alicia. Don't go too far. Items A, E, and F for a public hearing and a resolution for the vacation of the utility easement. With that, Alicia, you're on, yeah, if you would, please.
So, this is similar to the previous one. This is an application by Stan Nuxall with Green Plan Construction. He submitted an application for a utility easement vacation along with the applicable fee on behalf of the property owner, West Richland Group, West Richland Group LLC. This site is currently unaddressed. It is at the intersection of Norma and 50th, just to the north of Yokes. There's a vicinity map in your packet. It is Attachment 3, and you'll see that it's just to the east of Enterprise Middle School in that bombing range, Paradise Commercial Area, just north of that. Similar, this is a Willamette Heights Section 6, Lot 210. The easement that sought to be vacated is the The easement that sought to be vacated is the west on that, excuse me, it's that east property line twenty feet as well as that south property line twenty feet. That's the simple explanation, but the full image of the exhibit map is in attachment two, for your reference. The, and that easement vacation will exclude the portions that are reserved for public right-of-way. The, again, the staff routed to the application to franchise utilities, and they were given the opportunity to comment. No one objected to the, to the vacation of the easement and public, the Public Works Department approved the vacation request. Staff staff sees that the vacation of the easement will not unduly jeopardize the health, safety, welfare, or public good, and the easement no longer serves any useful public purpose and can be vacated.
With that, I will go ahead and open the public hearing. It's up at six-thirty-one to hear many individuals present this evening, like to make comment. On the podium, state your name, place of residence for the record. Comments in three minutes.
Hello, my name's Mark Young. I'm one of the trustees at Aggression Church, and so this is running between the market property and ours, is that correct? Okay, and that runs right between it and also along the, what's, what side? South side, so up in, up by you. Alright, that's pretty much how everything was supposed to be, so I'm just double checking.
Best to verify. Anyone else this evening? And anyone from virtual world out there, star an eye, or raise your hand, and Stephanie will recognize you. Stephanie, do you see anyone out in virtual?
I do not.
I'll go ahead and close that public hearing at six-thirty-two. Counsel, I have a motion, please.
I move to pass resolution thirty-four, twenty-two authorizing the vacation portion of the thirty-foot utility easement for file V A C A oh-oh-five twenty-twenty-two.
Motion in a second, council, any questions, Alicia, this evening? That's a member Feto.
Listen, we just changed the zoning on this property.
Yes.
Not all that long. Can you remind me what we changed it to?
We changed it to R M six.
Thank you.
Any other question? Seeing none, then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carry. Thank you. Thank you, Alicia, appreciate it. We don't have, we have no unfinished business this evening, nor do we have any new business. This is the second opportunity for citizen public comment. If you'd like to address council, please come to the podium, state your name and residency for the record. Seeing no one? And move on. There's nobody there. Any virtuales tonight, Stephanie?
I do not see anyone with their hand up, no.
Is there anyone there, since I can't see?
We have one.
Very good, welcome. Glad to have you. Okay, we have plenty of room out in the audience. If you'd like to come join us next meeting. With that, then we will move on to staff reports. If you have any staff comments, put your card up on the dais and I will find you. Own solo, so, yeah, so.
Community Development Director Eric Mendenhall. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I just want to report that Roscoe and I, a couple of weeks ago, had the honor to go down to Las Vegas with the Tri-Deck Group and members of the City of Kennewick staff to promote the city of West Richland to retailers, restaurants, grocers, and try to recruit some businesses to the city of West Richland. So we were able to get a lot of good information from different stores and retailers and whatnot, and we're reaching back out to them, trying to recruit them to come and be part of our community. So it was a great experience. Saw lots of weirdos, but it was a good time.
Might also share who else from our local region were there participating as well.
Yeah, so City of Pasco and Port of Kennewick were there, City of Kennewick with their staff was there, and then, like I said, Carl, I with Tri-Deck was there. It was a good representation for our area.
And council, I'd also please accept my apologies for not introducing Commander Clark this evening, who's sitting in for the Chief Grego, who is enjoying some well-deserved time off. So I see Commander Clark, if you'd like to address council.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council members. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Apuna Clark, and I was recently appointed as commander for the police department. We have a lot going on, and I'll try to keep it short just to kind of put things in perspective. It's been a whirlwind of a couple of weeks. Of course, we had Chief Grego promoted to, well, from captain to chief, and then I was appointed as a commander, as well as Jared Kelly. We had two retirements, one which we all are aware of was Ben Majetic. And then within the last week, we also had Dwayne Olson, who was our former lieutenant, to retire. We have a lot of movement, not only with those promotions, but we are currently five positions down in police officers. So our manpower is struggling, but we have a great family over there. Our guys are hanging tough and covering shifts as they need to and doing the very best that they can. Positive light to that is we currently have one who just graduated, who will be announced at the next city council meeting. We have one lateral entry that was hired from Louisiana. Somewhere in the south, I'm pretty sure it was Louisiana.
Doesn't have an accent.
Does not have an accent. He's originally from Washington, so I think it kind of washed itself out. So he just left Monday morning, or Sunday night, actually, for the equivalency academy. And what the equivalency academy is, is basically if you're certified as a police officer in another state, then we send you, in the state of Washington, we send you to our state academy, which brings the lateral officer up to speed with our laws and, and things of that nature. So he will be gone for two weeks. We have three officers that were hired that are on our field training program. Two, two of which I think are pretty close to coming off of, off of the program, and then they will actually be assigned to the squad and become part of manpower. And then we have one currently going through the background process right now. I just got that information back today from our background investigator, and it's looking good so far. And then I will also be looking at one other tomorrow, as well as pulling our, our open list of applicants or interested applicants and checking in with them to see, you know, what their level of, if they're still interested, if they've been hired elsewhere, things of that nature. So in addition to that, we had, because of the promotions that occurred, we had on June first, we had sergeant's testing. And we will have, I meet with civil service tomorrow to certify that test, or, yeah, the actual results of that test. And then once that list is certified, when Chief Grego returns next week, we will go through the results of that, and then hopefully either later in that, later next week, or into the next week, we'll be able to have promotions for three new sergeants. So, a lot going on. Thank you, guys, for, this is obviously my first council meeting, so I'm learning a lot very quickly. I spend a little bit of trial by fire, but that's kind of where I shine the brightest. So, thank you, Mayor and council members for having me.
I just have to ask, council, if you have any questions of Commander Clark, do please fire away, no pun intended. She said she, she does perform well under, under the pressure, so. I see Mayor Pro Tim Brink, retired FBI, so stand back, watch out, here he comes.
Yes.
Commander, congratulations, number one, on your promotion. But you did mention in your discussion, five positions down, and the other officers are covering those shifts. Do we, as council, have any concerns for overtime expenditures during this transitional period?
I don't believe so. Been good on that. We haven't gone, to my understanding, and again, it's only been like a week for me, so I'm still getting my feet underneath me. But as I understand it, we are well within budget. There, there's been a lot of different accommodations made as far as making it so that we can limit that, limit the overtime issues.
Alright, thank you.
Aaron, if you have anything you wanted to elaborate on that in regards to the vacancies and the extra pool that builds from that, you could do so.
Not too much, I don't have that in front of me, but we do run the reports monthly. And it is something that I watch with all the departments, especially with all their vacancies, to see where a lot of times the vacancies themselves will actually create some slack in the budget. So even though there's overtime, we're not covering the medical and all the regular wages of an additional week. So they tend to balance out.
Thank you.
Councilmember Moran?
Thank you, and congratulations, Commander. I was just wondering, you had mentioned five open positions, so the ones that you mentioned that were filling in, that's five open on top of the ones that we're getting in, or are those five?
They're from the two retirements, so with Chief Majetic leaving, Dwayne Olson leaving, there's two. And then again, I'm not a hundred percent certain on this, but we had three open positions that were recently granted to the department. Correct?
Yeah.
So that's where that five comes from.
When the chief retired and Lieutenant Olson, that went from three to five.
Okay, so then the five open positions are on top of the ones that are getting filled by the ones that you had mentioned, like the recent graduate, the lateral that we're getting, that's five on top of those.
Correct.
We still need to fill. Okay, correct. You're welcome.
Pardon me? Yep.
That's good. So if you're interested in law enforcement, come talk to me.
Because I might, I might remain council member. She do have to pass a background test.
Yes.
Fingerprinting only won't get you through.
And our background investigation is phenomenal.
Alright. Commander Clark, Clark, thank you very much. Yes, it is an honor to have you. It's something that you and I have been discussing for quite some time.
And it is an honor for me. Quite honestly, if anybody, anybody who knows me very closely knows that I'm, I'm a worker, I'm a boots-on-the-ground kind of gal, and never really had it in my goals, my career goals, to be a commander. And since I've come to West Richland, I have I should have done it sooner. I mean, I've just been embraced. I feel like I'm part of a family, which is important in law enforcement. You know, we, our work is very dark, and I spent over a decade working the darkest parts of it. And so since I've come to West Richland, I've been nothing but embraced and just so many opportunities that I never thought I would explore. Just the doors have opened, and I'm truly honored to be part of this team and do the best that I can within the best of my abilities. And again, if you know me, I'm a bull.
Renewed enthusiasm and seeing, when I sit down and have conversation with Chief Grego and Commander Clark, I, I see, you know, we always have teased now Chief Grego as being Energizer Bunny. And I believe he has passed one of the batteries on to Commander Clark, so it's really an enthusiast. I, I, I I feel great to see the, the, the new, the new regime taking hold and moving this department to the next level, which it's, it's graduated many levels since we've all been here. And I'm excited to see what the new level of leadership with Chief Grego and you two commanders.
We're very excited as well. Thank you.
The other staff members? Very good. We will go ahead and move on to council reports, comments. I see Councilmember Bloom.
Yes, mostly Oh, it's Ben Franklin Transit is getting closer to having a new general manager. Possibly. We will also, on the agenda coming up, we will try and resolve the issue of sales tax request that the county commissioners have previously brought forth to reduce or to put the sales tax on for both of people. Discussing that again.
Are they asking for a new new vote, or are they asking for B F T to share some of the existing funding source, or where did that end up?
Well, it's not a share. It's, they're two independent things, but county commissioners, both Benton and Franklin County, have instituted tenth of a cent sales tax to support that's, that's There is a feeling that Ben Franklin Transit in, in, just like the city has gotten significantly more sales tax this past year. Twenty percent, is that correct, this year? Ben Franklin Transit is all part of that same sales tax, so we were up twenty percent as well, but we have much bigger pot as were Kennewick, Pasco, and, and Richland. Somehow those cities aren't sharing their sales tax back to the owners. But the county commissioners feel that Ben Franklin Transit should share their sales tax. The concern is, it's not sustainable. And so that's the discussion. Yes, we have that time, but I think everybody realizes that people are having to spend a lot more money on gas, which has no sales tax, and food, which has no sales tax. So we expect sales tax revenue to drop in the future. And the only reason Ben Franklin Transit has excessive funds right now, and I have a proposal out there to return the funds as a Christmas present, but that's beside the point. The federal government has pumped a tremendous amount of money, stimulus, which we've spent instead of our sales tax. So we have a significant reserve that's built up. But it's, it's a temporary situation.
Perfect, thank you. Councilmember Moran?
I'm trying to think back to when our last meeting was, what's gone on. I hope everybody had a wonderful Memorial Day. Also happy Pride for this month. So we've got a Ben Franklin Council Government Meeting coming up on the seventeenth from ten to noon. It is a hybrid meeting. Most people, if you are not part of the F Pro, you can attend virtually, because you have limited space in the F Pro. And other than that, I do want to mention that on the twentieth, that is the federal holiday and also the West Richland holiday now for Juneteenth that we have off. And on the twenty-first through the twenty-fourth is the Association of Washington Cities conference that's happening in Vancouver, which I am hoping to attend. I had sent an email to Stephanie, and I believe that Mayor Pro Tim Brink is going to be there. And I am hoping that maybe anybody else that would like to attend, and always a really great opportunity to meet with other municipal leaders and discuss what's going on in other municipalities to see, you know, how they're doing things, if there's any way that we might want to change things, and just in general.
Councilmember Stoker?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hey, just real quick, Roscoe, I think yours, I think it was your son a few years ago, went on the Benton REA Washington DC youth tour, correct? Well.
Seventeen.
So I just wanted to put a little plug in for Benton REA.
So I just wanted to put a little plug in for Benton REA. I think this is a really good program. I hope I could encourage the youth of our community to take advantage of that. My daughter was a winner this year. So she's leaving a week from this Saturday, and boy, is she excited. And, and actually Benton REA has a really nice treat this year. The, I can't remember which REA district is out in Franklin County, north of Grant County, too. But their candidate has pulled out, and so they've offered to replace, allow Benton REA to take that spot. And so the runner-up for Benton REA's contest is going to get to go as well, so you get three representatives from the community, one from Prosser, my daughter, obviously, from West Richland, I don't know where the, I believe it's a young lady, third person is from. Anyway, what a great opportunity. So again, any sophomores or juniors for next year, please take advantage of it. You have to write an essay, you have to do a mini-vue, but I think it's worth it in the end.
We'll, we'll look forward to seeing your, your daughter's picture in the upcoming rural life.
It is in June, one is already out. That's where I read about Roscoe's son. I was like, hey, I know that name.
It's quite, it's quite a trip. They go back and represent our, our co-op, and there's probably another thousand.
It'll be somewhere around fifteen hundred, seventeen hundred youth around the country there.
They meet with, they get to tour the Capitol and all the monuments, and, yeah.
Riverboat ride with the youth from Georgia and Texas, I believe, is already planned.
Yep.
Diners, they get to meet the representatives.
And they vote on representatives for the state of Washington, so encourage her to put her name in the hat for that. That'll get her another trip.
Already getting another trip. The Youth Leadership Council, that's, if she gets selected, which one of three, you know, it's all to read and apply. She's going to go to Nashville next year.
All right, very good. Thank you, council. Councilmember Hayes?
Yes, I just wanted to invite the community to Speedfast twenty twenty-two, this coming up, June twenty-third to the twenty-fifth, out at the Tri-City Raceway. And it's a combination of merging Hogs and Dogs and Cold Desert Nights together. And we have a lot of other fun, exciting events, swap meet going on. We have a lot of opportunities for other nonprofits that are being able to come help us, and we're able to pay them for their services. So it's really turning into quite an event, and I encourage everybody to come out and enjoy themselves and see all the motorcycles and cars, and it's gonna be a great time, so.
Concert, Kingsman?
Kingsman are coming, yes.
Two different two-night shows.
And the stomping ground, the other band is going to be the opener both nights. So, yeah, there's a lot of exciting stuff happening for this community then.
Swap meets, sell, buy. Whole new venue, it's real good. We're excited about that. And back to REA and thank you, May Hayes, for being our executive director of West Richland Chamber. sponsored by REA, but Councilmember Bloom just reminded me of the REA annual meeting that's coming up July sixteenth. Eight thirty, starts at eight thirty in the morning at Lenora Libby, right across the way here. So always a good time, so take that in. And Mayor Pro Tim Brink, I see you might have something else you want to add to see.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next week, the Benton County Law and Justice Council is going to meet. That is a council comprised of city leadership as well as citizen representatives. It hasn't met, I think, since the pandemic began, but they are going to meet at the Okenoggin Building. County building there. One of the topics that they're going to be discussing is the public safety sales tax. For those of you that remember back in twenty fourteen, voters approved for Benton County a three-tenths of one percent sales tax increase to fund public safety. And I know our city is the direct beneficiary, funds at least one position, at least two positions. So.
Great.
Oh, three?
Yeah.
Thank you, miss. So that tax is set to expire in December of twenty twenty-four. So there is going to be a push to renew that. And so I just wanted to make our citizens aware that that's something that they will have to decide upon, probably within the next year or so, but if this tax has been a critical addition to public safety within Benton County. But the discussions are going to start on renewal next week. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else this evening? Okay, seeing nothing else, we will adjourn this meeting at six fifty-five, and thank you, everybody, for joining us for the first, hope of many in-person council. Hi, Brett.